This council meeting is called Order and of course with the open public meeting law, this meeting of, sorry, January 18th, 2022, was included in the list of meetings published in the covering news and store ledger. Notice of this meeting is placed on the bulletin board for all. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of the statement shall be included in minutes of the meeting. Mayor Dennis Sullivan. Council members Graham O'Brady.
Here.
Jane Kabootis, excuse. Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Roger Vroom.
Here.
Fred Weed.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Please stay and join me in the black slater for next day. Hallelujah.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and in this whole liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we honor a true man of Somerville. Tom Yavec Jr., graduated from Somerville High School and was named to the Somerville High School Hall of Fame in 1947. He served in the U.S. Army National Guard. Was a member of Engine Company One for 61 years. Member of the Somerville Elks, 41 years, including Elk of the Year. Coached in Somerville Little League. Coached in Somerville Pop Warner. Big shoes to fill. We all knew Tom and a moment of silence is not enough, but it's what we can offer at this point. May he and his family play peace in his passing and may his example shine for us. Do we have any minutes?
Oh, there's no minutes, sir.
Okay. We have our monthly reports, you see humors, annual flow, and Somerville Ward of help. Committee reports will start to light for our right, Councilman Lee.
I think the only time I've been accused of being on the far right.
So. Geographically, not politically.
There we go. Finance is certain, the budget season already. It is upon us and is being warmed up slowly but surely. For, as for the library, as I reported last year, it went to effect beginning of this year. All lake lines and all branches have been eliminated. So this really should help, hopefully help people be less concerned about getting books from the library. This is a really, really good move, in my opinion. For recreation, the registration for spring soccer will open on February 1st for students in grades one through eight. As a reminder, all programs are exclusively for children that reside or attend school in Somerville. Finally, youth services and the Municipal Alliance Commission, we are always looking for people who are interested in this committee. And if you know you or you know anyone who is interested, please let the mayor or the tenants know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Nelson.
Oh, yes, sir. First of all, the Environmental Commission. The Environmental Commission has logged 450 hours of volunteer service last year. It's almost a quarter of work. The Bag Up New Jersey campaign needs New Jersey Clean Community Council's new single-use plastic and paper bag ban outreach campaign, which has a simple message, bring your own reusable bags when you shop. The statewide ban on disposable bags goes into effect on May 4th. For more information, go to bagupnj.com. Injured Five has been returned to its ceremonial position in the fire department. It will be at the museum for special events, parades in town, Santa Claus, and is a living history lesson for the community. Thanks to the fire maintenance department and all the dedicated volunteers for the many hours of hard and complicated work to repair and preserve this historic treasure. That's all.
Kevin, in relation to what Tom mentioned about the bags, can we make sure that's posted?
Sure.
On the website, so I don't know whether the merchants in town are going to have a similar program. Natalie, could I ask you if that's something that your office could push out?
Absolutely.
To the merchants, just so that we know, you know, that that ban will be, you know, in effect.
Yeah, certainly, you can send that out to our constant contact.
Excellent. All right. Ellen Gray.
The, I attended the ICS 4-2 training course at the County Emergency Services Training Academy. This is a course that is required of all the governing bodies and, which is all the people sitting at this table. So if you haven't taken it, you can take it either live, which is what I did, or you can take it virtually. But it takes about two hours. It's a phenomenally good course to give you an overview of what OEM's responsibility is, not only in the borough, but also in the county. I'll tell you right now, I took a, I took a similar course several years ago and it was informative, but this, this knocks your socks off because if you're going to have an emergency, this is the county to have it in. They certainly know how to coordinate and the amount of work that goes into it is just phenomenal. And as the year goes on, I will keep people posted, this is exactly what's being done to make us safe. It's, it's not a visible function. People don't know we exist, but it's a very important function. The snow removal went along pretty well. The snow was removed and no one seemed to get too upset about it. So I just would request that people who are parking on the street remove their cars, their cars when the snow comes. We are currently renting temporary quarters or temporary buildings for DPW down on Fifth Speed. So we still are active, we can provide the services, but right now we're just renting those, those quarters. They're quantitats, I think we call them. And finally, every once in a while, I wanted to just appraise council of what we do that may not be something that's evident. You know the street sweeper comes and sweeps the streets, okay? Well, what happens to that stuff? Well, what happens to it is we have a company that does the soil screening and they screen the leaves and street sweepings to make sure of it, no hazardous materials. And this goes along with what Tom does with environmental, is going to endanger the environment. That particular function, I looked at the voucher the other day, it costs us $3,400 to have that done. So people who are putting stuff out, we better remember, everything you put out there that shouldn't be there is going to cost us money because we do monitor your street sweeping. And that's all I have for my report.
Thank you. Councilman Vroom.
Sure. So I, the numbers were in from last year. Our fire department responded to 635 incidents in 2021. So I wanted to make sure that we reported on that. Obviously, as we know, our volunteers are the backbone of our community and our volunteers, again, responded to 635 incidents. So that's pretty tremendous and it's, it's a lot for, I would say, our borough, more than, more than you'd expect. On a separate topic with the, looking back at the zoning that was discussed before we left for holiday break and came back, we obviously didn't get a chance to talk about it during our re, what's the word?
Reorg.
Reorg meeting, yeah, wow, it's been a long day. Our reorg meeting, what we're doing is this, we are creating an ADHOC committee to look at the zoning situation. So that will consist of members of our planning, zoning, and environmental committees. And I'm pleased to announce tonight, starting tonight, running until next Wednesday, any citizen who's interested in being a part of this committee can submit a resume to myself or Mrs. Luca and we'll go through those resumes and choose a handful of folks. We want to make sure that we keep the committee a decent size, but not too big so we can move things along. As soon as the committee is selected, which we're hoping to do, as soon as we get those responses that Thursday and Friday, we'll, we'll go through them in Jekyll. We plan to have a meeting as soon as possible to keep things going. Again, you know, we were asked to be thoughtful and take our time and that's exactly what we're doing. So please bear with us, we are getting things together. But again, any person, any citizen who's interested in being a part of that committee can submit their resumes to myself or Mrs. Luca and again, we'll go through them. It starts tonight, runs until next Wednesday, so that everybody has a week to get their, their information in. That's all I have.
Kevin, again, would you post that on the, our website?
Sure.
And once we get that done, I'll make those appointments, I can probably. All right. Council President.
What the TSA presented tonight, I do not have additional.
Okay. Just a few items from myself, a level with, with Mr. Brady said I, I took the, the training course for OEM online and the old adage is if you, you know, you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And we went through about 100 hours of training in two hours. And again, it's just the tip of the iceberg, but it is reassuring to know that, that there's coordination, there are partnerships. Most of the OEM functions in the, in the county are staffed by veteran people that have been through, maybe not the extreme that we had last year, but they've seen a lot over the years and we are well-served, well-represented. And I would advise those of you that didn't have a chance to take it, to, you know, evaluate yourselves at the next possible time. Kevin, make sure you, you know, get to them the next, either virtual or in-person schedule for that. All right. Two more quick items. I was informed last week that Joe Jim Cusick will be retiring from their mortuary business in, in the near future for, for health and, and other personal reasons. They've served this community since 1949, I believe, or 1950. And there's probably not a family in the town that has not been comforted by the excellent services that, that they provide. Imperial Home will continue to operate. It's, it's being purchased and will be run by a former graduate of Somerville High School, someone who's trained in the field and is, is renovating the property right now. And I look forward to, you know, to working, working with them. It's not a service people like to talk about, but it's inevitable. And, you know, I lost both my parents within six weeks of each other, you know, eight years ago. And having a good, you know, person to, to help me through that process made it, you know, made it a lot easier. So I certainly wish the Cusick boys all the best. They've been fixtures in this community on many levels for a number and number of years. And I wish them a health and success in their retirement and good luck to, you know, to their successors as well. Finally, if you travel on South Bridge Street in the next few days, you will see some major infrastructure improvements. There are new traffic signals installed. They will not be operational until the 21st. And at that point, they will go to flashing and they will not be fully functional till the 27th. This is going to be, this is the intersection of South Bridge Street and Robson Boulevard, which is the entrance to the new project to, to the west side of Bridge Street. There will be, there will be synced and linked to the existing traffic signal on Veterans Memorial Drive so that the two signals will work in conjunction with one another to keep the traffic flow moving on, on the South Bridge Street. It's not a four, a full four-way intersection. It does not match up Robson Boulevard with Second Street. Planning Board made sure that when the project was approved, it's a three, it's a, it's a three-way. And there'll be a center turn lane, there'll be delay signals. Again, it, just an alert to the public that things will be different as you travel north and south. There'll be advanced warning signals and that, that will, the advanced signals will stay in effect, I believe, for six months. So that by, by the fall, the signal, as people acclimate to it, should, you know, function the regular way. So just a word of caution, if you're coming north on South Bridge Street into town or leaving South Bridge Street, heading, heading south to 206, just be aware that once you come near the train trestle, there'll be something different. Kevin, could you reach out to the school and just alert them? We do have some students that walk home on South Bridge Street. There is a crossing guard at the Veterans Memorial Corner, but I would just feel comfortable if you would alert, you know, the superintendent's office so that any of our kids that walk that way have, you know, have, have the, the knowledge that there might be something different.
Sure.
And let the crossing guard company know as well. All right. That's all I have for committees. I do have two mayoral appointments, which I need consent from council. First one is to appoint Councilman Weed as a voting member of the Municipal Alliance Commission and the Youth Services Commission. So I'll take a motion. So move.
Second. Council members Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
And that's a one-year appointment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, my second appointment, which is an add-on to the, to the agenda. We have an existing vacancy on the Recreation Commission and I would like to appoint Ms. Torres Azario, who used to actually work in our recreation office since, left borough employment. Is now private citizen, but she is a resident of Somerville. She's expressed interest in filling that position. I believe it's a full three-year appointment, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, so I, I would move, President Torres Azario, I'll take a motion. So move.
Second.
Council members Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Kevin, welcome her award and I know she will be an asset to the Recreation Commission. All right, one item for discussion tonight. Downtown Somerville Alliance is in the process of developing their 2022 budget and we have with us tonight the newly-elected chairperson, Governor Mike Curran and Executive Director Natalie Panero to walk us through the budget highlights and I'll turn the floor over to them.
Thank you. It's an honor, I guess, to hold these chairs and get a point of chair. It wasn't expected and I have looked forward to working on everybody and make something spectacular happen.
Well deserved.
I had a big. Uh, this is really Natalie's show, but I, I do want to just recognize my Vice Chair, Councilman Pitts and my fellow board member, Kevin Sluka. We really focused hard on developing strategies and goals for the year so that we're not just spending money for the sake of spending money, but we're actually investing in the outcomes that will help this great town of Somerville. So I think Natalie, well, I'm not going to spoil the, we're going to see, but I think Natalie's communication skills are fantastic. The asset we want to show all tonight is this presentation, that's kind of explaining what we're trying to do for downtown. Good, good things in it. All right. We can keep talking.
[laughing]
Okay.
Yeah. This is what they do, you can mark it.
Trevor, can you hear that?
Yeah.
I'm going to think that you know.
Good.
[inaudible]
One of the, uh, it's up, we'll figure it out in one second.
[inaudible]
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 This is why I like flip shirts.
Index course.
Really? Hello, Graham. Happy New Year.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The water happens a lot. It happens a lot.
Yeah. It's good.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, would you see? Can't speak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to say it?
[inaudible]
Hey, Grant. You're standing in front of the camera slot.
Not that much. At this point.
Yeah.
Look, you just got your head.
Right on that.
Yeah. I don't know why not have a little walk in the case you're not.
Um.
That's not that I can work with.
Yeah.
No, we couldn't see it.
Yeah.
Another.
We try to, we see if that's not.
Same thing. Well, I have this one.
Okay.
Yes, I, what is that?
Yeah. Yeah, I did, I did see that. Yes. Good.
Yes.
[inaudible]
Now, well.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
Ah, yes. All right.
Yeah, it's.
I gotta make sure you're not a robot, Natalie, seriously. Eyes. Where'd you get this selfie? Where'd it from?
Here.
Where'd you get this all this from? The shit that I gave him.
[inaudible]
Oh, nothing came by us, that's what I wondered, is it from New Jersey or is it from?
I don't know. I can't answer. That's all I can do about it.
You gonna pass it by us with you?
I don't know. Also, just.
Okay. Are the other? [inaudible]
You gotta take a look at that.
Oh, that's great. Well, we would go ahead, hopefully I already. [laughing] Uh, thank you everyone for your patience. Technology never seems to work the way we want it to, so. All right. My mask on. All right. So when we think about the way that downtown Somerville has grown and progressed since I got here in 2019, we can say that it's experienced a remarkable growth. As a matter of fact, I was able to relive the history of downtown Somerville as I was writing an article recently for Downtown New Jersey that talked about the district's evolution and contemplated the struggles of the past. But we started out, when they asked me to write the article, from a perspective of a bustling downtown where every weekend, every spring, every summer, in recent memory, the streets are teeming with people. But for those of you who have been here for a long time, we know that it hasn't always been that way. So those of you who have been here from the beginning have witnessed how this incredible growth trajectory has been tested over time and that it was tested no more so than in 2020 when COVID arrived on our doorstep. And to start recovery efforts with a large-scale effort, in 2021, with the blessing of the Borough Council, we increased our budget from around $600,000 to approximately $800,000 to be able to provide additional support for our business community. And we coasted through 2021 with COVID still on our minds, but hopeful that 2022 would bring something different. Well, unfortunately, here we are in January and our good friend Omicron has started to derail some of those plans. But we put this budget together with the assumption that by spring/summer 2022, we will be in a better place and people will be excited to reconnect and they'll choose to do that right here in downtown Somerville. So we're going to start off by looking at some unique opportunities that 2022 is going to bring us. So as I just mentioned, operating in 2022 is still going to be a bit different, but understanding where we are, where we've been. but understanding where we are, where we've been, and where we want to go, we've, um, put together a series of six opportunities that I believe we're very much able to take advantage of in 2022. So, for those of you, uh, who were with us back in 2019, you know that branding was, uh, something that's been on my mind since I started here. Uh, and we've been marching towards the finish line of this exercise for quite some time. Last year, the board, uh, selected this color palette, which is a little muted, uh, because of the projector screen, and this logo to represent the district. So, understanding the isolating effects that COVID has had on us socially, we see this not just as a debut of new symbolism and a, uh, refresh of vibrant colors, but we see this as a new banner to get behind. A method of unification for our downtown community, a crest, if you will, for the family of businesses that invested in our growth. It'll also provide an opportunity to overhaul our marketing channels and materials and focus on launching a new, more functional website, um, that will be the go-to for anything you need to know about downtown Somerville. In 2021, the DSA adopted a public art plan with the help of our friends from the Wine Garden Art Group. And thanks to the work of our community partners Arts on Division, who started our beloved mural program and laid the foundation for successful arts programming, we see 2022 as a historic opportunity to roll out our plan with high-impact projects and a goal to solidify Somerville as Central Jersey's arts hub. So, some may ask, why do we want to make public art such a priority? What's the benefit of becoming an arts hub? Well, we know that public art has an impact on our local economy and that it has a direct impact on cultural tourism. It has an impact on quality of life, economic investment, and it's an opportunity to embrace culture and diversity through relatable mediums that are going to continue to set Somerville apart for years to come. And finally, this investment will continue to generate good publicity for the district and enhance the downtown ecosystem. So, if you follow NJ.com and Jersey's Best, hopefully you made note of this incredible article called Taking It To The Streets: How Murals Are Transforming New Jersey Communities, where downtown Somerville was featured alongside some of our favorite arts communities like Asbury Park, Jersey City, and Montclair. So, we're excited to keep the momentum moving forward. So, through working with stakeholder groups and working with our partners at Wine Garden, we identified several areas for art activation, but decided that our first large-scale public art activation should be on the courthouse lawn. And we're very excited to work with our community partners, to work with everyone here at the Borough and at the County of Somerset to roll that out. And we'll be hosting the Wine Garden Art Group later this month to take a tour of the grounds. So, just a moment ago, I mentioned our downtown ecosystem. Because of our planning and strategic initiatives, we have an opportunity this year to better connect our ecosystem to support the downtown Somerville experience, of which I know you all know very well. Um, so, we know that the downtown Somerville experience is really the essence of downtown Somerville. It's our secret sauce to keeping people engaged and keeping people coming back to experience the magic. So, when we look at best practices for downtown design, placemaking and that public art we talked about so, uh, just a moment ago, we know that this takes, uh, a variety of different components coming together. And so, this is an opportunity for renewed visioning, an opportunity to ask ourselves questions like, does our downtown invite you to sit? Does our landscaping invite you to walk? Does our public art invite you to explore downtown Somerville? Do we have experiences that are laid out strategically along that walk that will keep you moving and keep you experiencing our district? So, I think this is an incredible opportunity that we have for this year and again, it's another one that I'm excited to explore further with the Borough's support and the support of our board trustees. So, along those same lines, this year we have an opportunity to lay the foundation for a legacy streetscape project to transform the landscape downtown and really enhance walkability, relating again to enhancing that overall downtown Somerville experience. And this is really important to look at because as our district grows and changes, as residents in the district itself increase in number, as Somerville becomes more popular, we really have to think about those pieces, um, that relate to infrastructure, that relate to landscaping, our furnishings, our lighting and amenities. Those can't fall behind because as we know, Somerville is not only attracting visitors from inside of Somerville, from outside of Somerville, from different cities, from different counties, even from different states. And we have to stay competitive. So, with all of the great things that we have going in our district for 2022, we have an opportunity this year to further diversify our marketing efforts. Last year, we kicked off the year by talking about different strategies and we really decided to strategically focus on the digital piece. We secured a digital billboard for the entire year. We engaged in additional digital advertising online and we started a successful influencer marketing program that has yielded increased sales and partnerships for our businesses. And I'd like to show you a small clip of what one of those has looked like. So, this is a local influencer who we're actually having some back for Valentine's Day and they toured downtown and invited them to take in our shops, to do a yoga class, to experience our dining. And this particular influencer had about 14,000 followers. So, right now, we're aiming for that mid-level of followers, uh, for influencers that are very specifically here in Somerset County or in New Jersey. And so, this particular influencer did contests where people could win products and gift cards from all of the businesses that she visited. So, it created a great longstanding partnership. So, this year, I see it as a year to build on that influencer program, utilize strategies like geo-targeting, create more engaging and robust email marketing campaigns for increased subscriptions, and add channels like TikTok to our roster of social media and drive traffic to our website with video and engaging content. So, this next opportunity centers around revitalization. With the challenges that were brought forth due to COVID and the tragic impact of Hurricane Ida, all eyes are on the eastern portion of our district. The DSA committed to shining a light on the needs of the merchants and property owners here and support revitalization and redevelopment. We'll be looking at using resources and guidance for organizations like the New Jersey Redevelopment Authority, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, and UCEDC. We'll also consider lease incentive and infrastructure improvement programs. And finally, we'll look at increasing programming on the east end of our district. One area of opportunity is that courthouse lawn, which was utilized more frequently last year due to the support and partnership of the County of Somerset. So, now, we're getting to the meat and potatoes of this presentation. Um, we're gonna start talking about the actual breakdown of our budget. So, our budget is broken down into several different categories, but before we go into those categories individually, let's talk about the total budget and where our income is projected to come from. So, we're proposing a budget of just over $800,000. I know that's, uh, the number you see on the screen is a very random number, but I promise it'll all come together. That includes about $620,000 of special improvement tax revenue, about $40,000 in projected sponsorships, about $92,000 in our trust account, about $20,000 in carryover from unfinished projects from this year, about $75,000 in grants, and about $15,000 in fund development. So, on the screen, we have our budget breakdown and we have the percentage of the budget that goes into, that each of these areas pays up. So, we have about 10% of our budget going to debt service, about 33% of our budget going to infrastructure, about 8% of the budget dedicated to events, another 8% dedicated to marketing and communication, about 11% going into economic vitality, about 20% going into management, and about 7% going into office support. So, we start off with our debt service and this is an area that hasn't changed much from year to year. It includes payments to the state and the Borough for various parking lot improvements that were previously financed by our organization and the Borough. So, in 2022, we'll be paying off some of this debt and negotiating to lower some of our payments. So, the $20,000 that you see at the top is the loan that we'll be finished paying off this year, bringing up about $20,000 for our 2023 budget. And that bottom lot acquisition, Acquisition 1A, uh, I believe is the payment that we, um, are trying to reduce down to $15,000 for this year. So, obviously, our total debt may be lowered, uh, but we're keeping all of this in our budget for now since it's better to be safe than sorry. Now, this is a big area of our budget. Um, this is our infrastructure and streetscape budget and this contains things like our, uh, tree skate program, our sidewalk sweeping, our seasonal plant or beds, lags, general cleaning and service to the district, and the placement of our furniture and seasonal amenities. I'm gonna try and zoom in here for you. So, many of these areas are handled by a combination of the Borough's Department of Public Works and our contracted vendor. Um, since the DSA has become a standalone nonprofit, we've worked yearly to lessen the services that we require from TPW and this year is no different. We're happy to announce that we'll be working with a new vendor to execute our Clean and Safe program and that we're moving towards more of a hospitality model where it comes to servicing the district. In selecting a vendor, we were really interested in moving forward with an organization that researched our district and brought more than just cleaning to the table. We wanted a vendor that shared our vision for growth and I think we found them. So, in line with our growth, I think we need to acknowledge that Somerville has inherited a few unique challenges over the past few years, including an increase in our homeless population, some loitering, and a host of issues that can disrupt outdoor dining and the downtown Somerville experience. And let's not forget COVID. And that's likely to be here for a while. And because of that, we really need to have increased cleaning and sanitizing services because if people don't feel safe, if they're afraid of getting sick, they're not going to shop, dine, or explore downtown Somerville. A lot of this not only has to do with performing those acts of cleaning and sanitizing, but also with visibility and perception. So, we're excited that in addition to the regular services that are part of the Clean and Safe program, we will be adding a seasonal ambassador that will be walking in uniform to help address these issues and liaison with the police department on disorderly conduct and other quality of life and safety issues. So, the total of our infrastructure and streetscape did go up from last year just slightly, but that's because we're providing a host of new services that we hope will enable our district to continue to grow and operate more efficiently. So, decades of economic evolution are leading us to realize that experiences that are personal and memorable can help us acquire and retain clients and customers as well as recruit and retain top talent. The Harvard Business Review tells us that an experience occurs when a company intentionally uses services as the stage and goods as the props to engage individual customers in a way that creates a memorable event. So, it is with these concepts in mind that we budgeted for this year's roster of events. If you were here with us last year, which most of you were, you'll note that our budget in this area has actually gone down. So, this comes, uh, from a place of really wanting to place an extra focus on high-yield events. Those events that we know bring a lot of people to downtown Somerville and we wanna look at those events and, um, invest in making them bigger, better, and safer as we navigate the rest of the pandemic. So, I once heard a quote that said, "You are no one until you're talked about." And this is the premise on which our communication and marketing strategy is based on. The most important part of increasing traffic downtown really comes from spreading the word about downtown Somerville and the unique, one-of-a-kind experience that you can have here. More importantly, the type of communication that's most valuable to us is that word-of-mouth communication. So, this year, we're going to focus on those areas that we know are going to yield us a greater return on investment and generate those authentic connections, which in turn drive people downtown. So, part of creating those connections involves investing in mediums that we know are trending. And with the skyrocketing engagement on Instagram with Instagram and Facebook reels and the phenomenon that is TikTok, we are really excited, uh, to invest a lot more dollars in video work this year, specifically video work that'll be versatile and that we'll be able to use across platforms. One of the things that we had a lot of success with last year was our billboard program. We currently, um, are leasing a space of a billboard on Route 287 and we strategically use the billboard on Route 28 by the Patriot Stadium to capture local traffic. So, we wanna continue to utilize these tools in 2022 and also allocate funding for Facebook ads, digital ads, radio ads, TV commercials, and print ads like the ones that we have with Edible Jersey. We also have dedicated, uh, a line item of $26,000 for our website. We know that our website is in dire need of improvement. It's lost a lot of its functionality. Um, and so, once our branding exercise is finalized and our brand book is in our hot little hands, we plan on turning that over, uh, to build a website that has a lot more functionality, a lot more interactivity, and hopefully a lot more value to our business community. And finally, we have our annual subscription for Content Contact, which is our email marketing system, which has also been a fantastic tool for us. We have almost 6,000 subscribers to our email list and based on feedback I've gotten from many of our business owners, it's one of the most essential pieces of our marketing program, which we intend to continue to grow. So, economic vitality works with the existing economic base to facilitate and promote collaboration, advocacy, and assistance. This is where we carve out a budget for things like outreach, data collection, grant programs, contesting, and direct business support. One of the things that our businesses found the most valuable during the COVID pandemic was our $55,000 grant program that allowed us to do 11 $5,000 grants that did not require them to pay anything back. And if one of our goals is to support revitalization in the eastern portion of our district, then this is where those programs that we mentioned earlier will originate. And so, in this area, we're looking at light items for our retail consultant, our public art consultant, our grant writer, and other professional services that may arise. Alright, so, uh, next we talk about management because this place isn't gonna run itself. So, this is the area where you'll notice general staff requirements like salaries, professional insurances, health insurance, and 401K. Hand-in-hand with management comes our next slide, which relates to office support. So, this includes things like our rent, our dues and subscriptions, our accounting fees, our office supplies, professional development, garage rentals, so on and so forth. Uh, I wanna point out that we don't have any expenses in terms of office phones, cell phones, uh, cellphone reimbursement, internet, uh, office furniture, because all of that comes with our subscription and office evolution. our subscription and Office Evolution. So they give us all the comforts of having a big office, right, without the price tag that comes with phone bills, internet bills, purchasing furniture, and all of that jazz. So I think we really do get a value for our dollar there. We also have our contingency set at about $10,000, and this is basically our emergency And then finally, the last slide that we have is our capital improvement fund. We try and keep this area at about $92,000 or above to fund things like our tree skate program, our snow removal, and any other improvement projects that should need to And that's a wrap. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your attention. And at this time, I will open the floor to questions or comments from Borough Council. Yes, Mayor?
Natalie, I'm especially intrigued by the ambassador.
Yes.
Okay. When do you think that person or persons will be elected?
So it's going to be a seasonal ambassador, so they're scheduled to start likely around April, when our events really start to kick off and there's a large population that is expected to come back.
Will it be one individual or a series of individuals?
So it's going to be one individual who's going to be hired at a part-time rate to just be in the district at peak hours, right? So that would be Thursday through Sunday, likely Thursday, Friday, Saturday. That would be from about 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then Saturdays and Sundays, there'll also be a portion that'll be during the day.
I'd like to invite you and that person in prior to them coming on board, just to be introduced.
Absolutely.
To us and to the general public.
Yeah, so I'd like to actually bring them to meet the police department as well, since they'll be liaising with them. And, you know, I think it's just a great opportunity to have a visible presence to increase safety and make people aware that the downtown Somerville Alliance is here in person.
Excellent.
I think you might say that, Mayor, and I think we can tie that in with the Borough Mayor Council's decision to hire additional police officers, including a couple that hopefully will be focusing on downtown. I think it's a win-win. They can kind of work together to really enhance that feeling of safety and security.
And it also has to do with clean and safe, right? We know that having an extra body on the street is going to help us keep things clean, keep things sanitized, to make sure that people feel comfortable. We talked about this visual representation, right, this idea of perception. So to have somebody out in a neon shirt, right, that's dedicated to cleaning, right, it really helps put people at ease, right, especially when we're in the middle of a pandemic.
And no one else does it. It makes Somerville downtown a unique, welcoming experience. I'm pleased to see how it works out.
You have a question?
Do you have a question? Question? Grant, you're...
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Right.
I'll just say quickly, you know, every once in a while I hear, "Oh, this isn't the downtown I grew up in." Our response is, "Good. I'm glad it's not the downtown I grew up in." Downtown I grew up in, a bunch of these storefronts in the Lakeview, Bridgewater, Common Ball opening up. In high school, it was called Somerville. I remember that nickname all throughout, all throughout high school. That's what the Ransford kids called it. So just seeing where it's come in the last, you know, 25 years, even the last 10 years, it's just wonderful. You know, I always like to remind people, take a look at your housing prices. See how high they are. That, that shows how important it is to have a strong downtown. So thank you, Natalie. Thank you, Mike, and to the entire DSA Board for all that you did.
Thank you.
Mr. President, final word is yours.
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation. I love the work that you're doing. Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you. We're in for a very exciting year.
So I think the ask is for a vote to approve the budget, and I think that's the way we're approaching it.
Well, here's, here's what has happened here. Just one point is that the, and the finance committees did talk about this. Right now, the DSA pays $25,000 towards Lot 1A, which we know today as Lot 8. The finance committee is considering reducing that to $15,000. I know Natalie, in her presentation, did not assume that, which is great. And then the role was to reduce that to zero, because Lot 8 really played a significant role in the SID. The municipality actually permits that lot out. So back, back when the DSA was, was a, in essence, a department of the municipality, for lack of a better word, that was a commission made by them. But at the end of the day, if the finance committee, in their, in their, in their effort to introduce their budget to the municipality, we would be actually reducing that payment, which again, gives the DSA just a little more fluke there. And then also, Mike did mention the officers, and we know the governing body hired the officers to help with the, some of the, some of the quality of life issues that we're having in the borough, and we just want to make sure that the DSA sees that benefit as well. But going back to the budget, really, this was the government, the DSA actually introduced the budget at their last meeting. All the municipality has to do today is affirm the introduction of that budget. So there's really no public hearing. Certainly, if you wanted, did a public hearing, you could, but you will actually hear this budget, not hear the budget, but you will have to adopt the budget after the DSA actually adopts it. You need a motion in the second.
Your affirmation.
Yeah, to affirm the budget.
Could I open it to the public?
Well, you can, you can, Mary, you can.
Motion.
You like it, it's the chairperson.
Motion. Second.
Councilmember is Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Wee.
Yes.
Randy Pitts. I'm just turning on the lights.
So just that presentation that Natalie just gave, she did through video, and every property owner within the district is going to get a copy of that, explaining why their special assessment goes through. And then identifying the property owner, you will hear that we're going to hold on our DSA meeting next month.
Yeah.
So everyone has, I think we're touching all the bases.
Excellent.
So thank you for affirming our introduced budget.
Well, we haven't gotten to that yet. We're at the hearing. We're at a public comment.
Public comment.
I see a public ready to comment. Name and address for the record, please.
Gina Stravic, 16 Grant Avenue, Somerville. Just a quick second, I have a quick presentation. One, on the environmental commission, I see that you're going to introduce projects in tree skate. We'd be happy to help you identify the trees or talk about that for that piece. The other...
One's a yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a yes.
Certainly.
Perfect. The other piece is regarding the police officers. I'm downtown every Friday night. My husband and I walk. We're, we're late to town, late getting back. We work late, so our schedule is different than normal people, but I rarely see police officers on the street on a Friday night. So I would welcome that communication to the police department that, you know, there's people controlling. Actually, I'd love to see them walking, not sitting in a car. I think that's a real...
Actually, what I heard was the old, the old police officer would walk Main Street and check the doors.
Yep.
They're doing that again.
Yes.
That's great.
So lucky door, yes.
I've had to open a few times. Exactly. So I'll check and call you in case you have to...
Definitely.
But that's kind of hands-on, police, I think is exactly the role, enhance the feeling that this is a really secure place to be.
That's the intent of the, of the restructuring of the police department. That has been communicated.
The word is, I've heard it from a couple different sources already. It's appreciated. So thank you.
And I know when I sat on the DSA, we were starting to look into the electronic, not billboards, but...
Kiosks.
Kiosks, yeah. So I heard you, you're talking about doing that again, so I think that would be great. Ideally, we talked about it many years ago, have one on each end of town, so if you took a bruise of the street, know what's on, you know, restaurants are, and what's availability, and the whole Disney World concept would be great.
Gina, thank you. So just so you know, we have a grant application to fund four, four of those that we've identified, so fingers crossed we'll get those grant dollars and be able to implement those this year.
Good luck. Natalie's referencing an application that was basically helping, and probably good opportunity to commend both Natalie and Administrator Kevin Sluga, because we found out the only way we have a shot at it is if we go in, through the collaboration with the borough, through public-private partnership, because we weren't sure if it would be funded available for strictly nonprofits. The challenge was, we found that out on Christmas Eve. The deadline to get the application in was New Year's. So one of those things where you've got to stand up. As I told Natalie, I didn't think she had any plans for that weekend either. But working with the endorsement we got from the borough and Kevin, we submitted that application, and it looks great. So I want to commend it publicly for the building. We have another public. Name and address for the record, please.
Rich O'Neil, budgeted talent, I think he's smart. I like what I hear and I like what I see. You're right, friend, it's not the same town you grew up in, it's really not the same town I grew up in.
True.
I have my backyard. So we won't include it. But I just have a quick question. I follow everything pretty much. I'm just, as you well know, I'm always concerned about the condition of the sidewalks and curbs and streets and all that. Is that specific in your judgment, or do we see it there?
Yeah, so the sidewalks, specifically some of the sidewalks that you pointed out to us, are in disrepair largely because of the trees.
Yeah.
And so we were addressing that year by year through our tree skate program. Last year, we were unable to execute that program because, correct me if I'm wrong, either the bricks were discontinued or they were severely backordered.
The brick was discontinued, and the ones we selected were, as a result of the delays in getting things in, they weren't able to get...
Well, just as an aside, as a young kid, much younger than now, I used to put sidewalks and like that before you were called back. We would take the old ones out, put them back in. If they're not broken, it can be reused.
Right.
Just, just to make things simple.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm on, I'm on your side, and I like what I see.
Thank you.
And I miss the cows, right, but...
We still have chickens, though.
Well, Rich, also, one of the things that we talked about was doing a large-scale street skate program. And part of that street skate would involve revisioning the sidewalks, as well as the landscaping, the furnishing, the lighting.
I get that, and I like that, but I'm talking about these little, little tracks.
You're talking, it's kind of seeming like a handy person.
Just to come along and...
Love a lot of the...
Yeah.
Pretty handy.
Yeah, and I don't expect you to be able to do that. You've got too much other things to do. But a little part-time guy could ride up and down on a pushchair or carry a hobby. And if you seat him up, also takes a two-by-four to hammer for Robinsons. But I just don't want to see anybody trick.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can discuss at the DSA. I think that, you know, obviously, if it's associated with a tree who's uprooting the sidewalk, then we cover that in the tree skate program, but it's...
I think we complicate trees. Urban trees are a problem. They're meant to be replaced. And I know that's heresy to say that in the green age, but they're probably still like corn. You know, there comes a time when they got to go, and a new one goes in. And that's just the nature of urban street trees.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to stand here and lecture.
No, no, no. Absolutely. It, it's just also my understanding that some of these are actually the responsibility of the property owner.
That I understand.
Yeah, so we, so we have to kind of figure that out, but certainly wherever there is an area where we can provide the service, it's something that we can certainly...
I think you're a great job, really good, really pleased.
Thank you, Rich.
Red, get those cows back.
There we go. Sounds good to me.
Motion to close public. So move.
Councilmembers Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Wee.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Motion to affirm introduced...
Second.
Councilmembers Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Wee.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Thank you. Thank you. Well done and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we have a series of ordinances for introduction. First one is 2618, 22-0118. Amending Chapter 80 entitled Fire Prevention and Life Safety, Section 8 entitled Certificate of Smoke Detector, Carbon Monoxide alarm, and Fire Extinguisher Compliance to Include Subsection B4 on Reinspection Fee in Establishing a Fee per Unit Inspection. Motion for introduction. So move. Second.
Councilmembers Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Wee.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. All right, next ordinance, 2569, 22-0118. Amending Chapter 166-46.1, Schedule VA, permit parking on the Borough Code, removing South Street from said schedule. Motion. So move. Kevin, this is a removal of the handicap space on South Ridge Street. On, on South Street.
That's correct, but oddly enough, it wasn't, it was originally adopted in one code many, many years ago, so it was, it was actually in the permanent parking code, even though it was a handicap parking spot. So it is removing that spot that currently, that previously had sat in front of the one home that's located on...
That'll actually will be metered, I assume, like the rest of the street.
Oh, possible.
All right, roll call.
Councilmembers Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Wee.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. All right, I think I jumped out of order here. 2658, 22-0118 is amending Chapter 80 entitled Fire Prevention and Life Safety, Section E, Fire Watch. Section E, one schedule of equipment rates for fire watch. Motion for that. So move. Second. A question, question. This is just setting the fees for the use of the equipment, correct?
So during a fire watch, firemen are asked to go there, and there's a fee that we pay to the volunteer firefighter. If that firefighter needs to take equipment with them, that's a fee that will also be charged. This is a recommendation by, by our firefighter. Yeah, so there's a fee attached to the vehicle, so if it's a ladder truck or something else, because the, the, the fire department essence doesn't have use of it during that period of time because it's in the, at the fire watch.
Are we charging a fee now?
No, there's no, there's only fee for the individual or individuals, as there's no fee for the apparatus.
We can go into that further in here. All right, so this motion is, did we do a motion?
Yes.
All right, so I need a roll call for introduction.
Councilmembers Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Wee.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Need a motion to open the meeting to the public. So move.
Councilmembers Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Wee.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Public session is open, and if you have a question or comment, you may come up and introduce yourself with your address for the record.
Gina Stravic, 16 Grant Avenue.
Welcome.
Thank you. Interested to hear more about the EV ordinance. Again, the environmental commission would love to see that, so I want you to introduce it and find out what's, what it's all about.
Okay, I'll refer that question to the chairperson, Mr. Broom. No, you're the EV, the...
Oh, I'm sorry, EV, I was...
Just for clarification on that, Mayor, and I know that we would have a public hearing, you had introduced this ordinance and adopted this at the end of last year. There was an advertising, and it went to the planning board, received comment, and came back. There was an advertising issue on, 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 on the item, which resulted in us having to redo this. So we held off because we couldn't introduce it at the end of last year because we're over the end of the year. So this is, we actually went through this process already, but just didn't complete it, so we have to redo the whole item. But yeah, so the public hearing, it'll go to the planning board for their comment, which we've had their comments, and it'll come back. And basically, what it is, is it's pretty self-explanatory on, on the front, is the entire ordinance is about when we're, when we're doing projects in the municipality, it's encouraging each, each project to supply electric vehicle opportunities within, it's not only project, but it's development. But we can go into... project to supply electric vehicle opportunities within, it's not only project, but it's development. But we can go into, it can go into a lot of detail going on in the public hearing, but it's a pretty extensive ordinance.
For instance, there's a proposed project that's going to come back to the planning board for South Bridge Street, and there's about eighty parking spaces projected. So there will be a formula for how many of those spaces would be allocated for charging, or how many charging units, I guess depending on the number of units in a project.
So is this going to require developers to put these in, or is this going to suggest? You said encourage, Kevin, you didn't say require.
Well, it's got to go back to the planning board for their comment. That's why the introduction is a little, I don't want to be presumptuous on it, but at this point, I think it's best to, you know, you know, I can give you the ordinance, you can review it with the Environmental Commission and so forth, but I mean, they'll have to come back.
You expect the planning board to have some significant comments.
Yeah, and then.
So typically what happens is if the planning board gets it first, then it comes to us, but the planning board meeting is after the Environmental Commission meeting, so then if you put it on the next meeting, we never get to see it.
It won't be on the next meeting, because whenever it goes to the planning board, I have to skip all these meetings, because the timetable doesn't really work for me.
Well, it doesn't work for the, you get my point, it does for the Environmental Commission.
I get it. What I was going to do is offer you now, to give you the paper copy of the entire ordinance, and then email you tomorrow, you know, and you can share what the Environmental Commission shared, and then go from there.
I would assume our planning board meeting next week is very full for the major application.
I was going to say.
I would assume we wouldn't, the planning board wouldn't discuss this until the first meeting in February at the earliest, which would be the second Wednesday. So we wouldn't get it back.
You may not be adopted until March.
Till our, probably, at earliest, our second meeting in February, but there's a holiday in there, too. So I'm guessing our first meeting in March as a timetable.
You have a paper copy for it.
I can.
Okay. Great, good. Perhaps if you look at your emails today, this morning, you received a letter from the Environmental Commission members, and as public record, in order to keep up to date with the latest science and information regarding stormwater, and to make informed decisions regarding the town's ordinances, most of the members of the Environmental Commission, Green Team, and I will be participating in an upcoming workshop, Storm flooding in New Jersey, improving stormwater management and preparedness. If the mayor and council are interested in learning more about this topic, I provide you by email the workshop information. As we await the community process to begin, this may be a good process, a good basis to start with. At our recent meeting, among other topics, we discussed the roadside development project next steps with regards to the requested community input sessions and revised ordinances. We see the need for a sound ordinance that takes into consideration the public view and the worthy ecological and environmental practices for the betterment of our community. We've talked a lot about that. What we haven't heard is what the next steps are really defined, and we make some suggestions as dedicated volunteers with a variety of experiences in the field. We feel strongly that this process should be led by an outside planning or environmental firm that has no current or past ties to the community. Taking into account residents' concerns, including their issues with affordable housing, this process through the channels of borough government requires land study of the affected areas, leads to the environmentally appropriate ordinance for the entire town, should align with the New Jersey D E P, new regulations that are coming to fruition, follows best practices, and becomes a model ordinance for Somerville and the county, and has clear and transparent communications to the public. We appreciate your consideration in the matter, and try to, and look forward to the process and the definition of the process. So with that, in that piece, and I just had another question, and another topic, if Jane Kabuda has resigned effective February first, and she's relocated already, how does that work? How can she serve for another month if she's not in town?
Well, she has not yet officially relocated. She's still a resident of Somerville.
Okay.
And she, if she's back during the meeting, she is still entitled to serve. Her resignation letter will be accepted in our consent part tonight. And Kevin, I believe the ordinance is, the schedule is controlled by the ordinance, which is triggered by the day of resignation.
You know, the vacancy law starts, it'll be effective February first, you get fifteen days, the party gets fifteen days, split three names, and then the government body gets additional fifteen days to make that decision.
And that's driven by, there's a state ordinance on.
That's the vacancy law.
We've gone through this process several times before with Mr. Pitts, and I believe Mr. Broom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina, answer.
You didn't send us an electronic plea.
Well, I sent the electronic plea.
Any additional public comments?
I believe Dennis Ellis, eight Lori Drive. I believe Mr. Broom had mentioned earlier a little bit about the process for the Resilience Committee. Could you just go over that again, because some people weren't here?
Sure, so as I said before, what we plan to do is, we are going to appoint current sitting members of our Environmental Zoning and Planning Board, and we are looking for any other, we want to open it up to the public, as we had said previously. So we are collecting resumes starting this evening, running until next Wednesday. We'll pick through those resumes and select some residents to be on the initial ad hoc committee. And then from there, we're going to set up our first meeting as quickly as possible so we can really start the process going as to the direction we want to move in, to ensure that we thoroughly look through the zoning and how we're going to approach that process, and how we're going to change it or amend it to ensure that it is, as was stated before, best practices in the state.
And how are you going to communicate that to the public?
Well, as the mayor said before, we're going to put it up on our website, we're going to put it out through social media, and anybody at this point can submit their resumes to myself or to Mr. Saluka, and council will go through, and we'll, myself and council president will go through and take a look at the resumes and go through them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion to close public.
Second.
Councilmembers, Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
We are at our consent resolution part of the meeting. I would like to call zero-three-seven. Any more for council?
Yes, twenty-zero-three-eight and zero-four.
Zero-four.
I'm sorry, zero?
Four-eight.
Three-seven, three-eight, four-eight.
Kevin was four-eight in it on, I don't have it.
Four-eight.
I don't have it on.
You don't have it four.
Mine is four-six.
I have.
I have a, that's the municipal court, that's four-eight.
Oh. Okay, I printed my vote and said four. That's okay. Four-eight?
That's right, Kevin, you published an amendment.
Amendment, okay. Anyone else? All right, let me run through these. I'll use the.
You need it correctly.
No, I got, I have a council question. All right, zero-three-five, authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for camping services for Phoenix Advisors. Oh-three-six, awarding a contract with top line construction for curb replacement on Fairmont and Grant Avenue. Three-eight, authorizing a change order number one to contract.
I'll hold three-eight.
I'm sorry, you're right. Thirty-nine, approving Christopher Bannas as a scorekeeper at a rate of fifteen dollars per game for recreation. Oh-four-oh, authorizing the sale of surplus equipment to the Somerville Rescue Squad. Oh-four-one, approving alcohol beverage license address changed to be submitted in Division of Alcohol Beverages. Oh-four-two, authorizing the sale of surplus equipment in two thousand and one Ford Excursion. Oh-four-three, authorizing the sale of surplus equipment being a nineteen-seventy-nine G M C. Nineteen-seventy-nine. Here my daughter was born. Oh-four-four, accepting payment from New Jersey American Water for work performed on Madison Street and Eastern State Parkway. Oh-four-five, approving and authorizing waiver of local fees for F T S Somerville LLC for the development of the emergency services facility. Oh-four-six, authorizing payment to Precision Service Center and authorizing a private sale of surplus equipment for two vehicles. And oh-four-seven, appointing Catherine Hous as acting municipal court judge effective January one through March eighteen. Motion on those.
Second.
Councilmembers, Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right. I'll take Tom's first, which was oh-four-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-four.
All right.
Thirty-eight was authorizing.
Change order to contract the L M R disposal for solid waste collection. Motion.
Second.
How?
I only wanted to say, I believe there's going to be no change as far as the garbage collection process is concerned, it's just the same garbage, same schedule. Everything will be the same as far as the health care is concerned, the only thing is it'll be, I was taking the garbage will be different, and I'll say this in my, correct?
Councilmembers, Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right, oh-four-eight, amending the resolution oh-one-eight to reflect Catherine Hous as appointed acting municipal court judge.
Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity, and I know as you said before, to thank Phil Kelleher for his many years of service, and just a little warning to Catherine Hous, that she's got some big shoes to fill. He's done a remarkable job, highly respected throughout the region, and he will be sorting this. That's all I have to say.
All right, roll call.
Councilmembers, Grandpa Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Roger Broom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Okay, oh-three-seven, accepting the resignation of Councilwoman Jane C. Kabuda effective February one, twenty-twenty-two. Motion.
Second.
Just a comment, we unheard, the Citizen of the Year, we've all spoken about her service up here, just a little historical content, and for the best of mine and my wife's knowledge